I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors and the Carson City Board of Health. It is Thursday, October 16th. It's just about 8:30 a.m. And we're in the community center, the Sierra Room, at 851 East Williams Street. And Alan, would you do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor McKenna, Supervisor Shirk. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, about.
Here.
You have a quorum present.
And I'd just like to add that Mayor Bob is in New Orleans right now. He's at a lobbyist convention. That's why he's not here today. Mark Sears here from the Salvation Army. Would you like to lead us in the invocation?
Let's pray. Our God in heaven, Father, we thank you for these leaders here today. We ask for your wisdom and blessing to be on each of them. We pray for the health for them and their families. Bless each of them today. Give them understanding as they seek to serve our community. We pray that you would give each of them courage to always seek the best for Carson City and its people. We invite your presence here to work in them and through them. We pray all this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move to item number five on the agenda, public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this public body. Is there any public comment? Stacy.
Morning, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Board members. Stacy Geomay, Fire Chief. I just wanted to highlight a fact, that is, that today is the Great American Shakeout, and in Nevada, it's the Great Nevada Shakeout. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that for a second, if I might. Nevada is the third most seismically active state in the U.S., behind Alaska and California. A lot of people probably don't realize that. On average, we have between six and 10 new earthquakes a day here in Nevada, six and 10 a day. Most of them are under 3.0. In terms of geological history, Nevada has gone the longest it has ever gone in its geological studyable history without having multiple 6.0 earthquakes over the last 50 years. We've had one in the last 50 years, roughly one in the last 50 years, since 1954, and that was in 2008 in Wells. And we've never had a period that long without having multiple 6.0 earthquakes somewhere in the state. So the folks at UNR, which is a leader in studying seismic activity and earthquakes, are concerned that as a society, we're getting complacent about earthquake safety. So today is the Great American Shakeout. You can go to shakeout.org/nevada and register if you'd like. There's a bunch of information there. But today at 10:16, the encouragement is that everyone takes some sort of active role in acknowledging that an earthquake could happen. So I briefly want to tell you what you should do in an earthquake, and I'll leave it to you to decide if at 10:16 this morning, you choose to do that. The key component of an earthquake survival, at least the immediate actions you should take, are to drop, cover, and hold on. So if you're in this room, under a table, under your counter, even under the chairs behind me, if you're outside, you should stay outside. A lot of people are injured every year, either coming in or going out in the exact moments of an earthquake. If you're outside, stay out away from a building. If you're inside, duck, cover, or drop, cover, and hold on. Immediately after, there's some basic things you can do, and most of it is common sense. Have really good situational awareness. Check your cell for injuries. Check your family. Check your immediate surroundings. And then check on a neighbor. If it's a big earthquake, we're going to be taxed, and we're not going to be able to come and help everybody. You know, what is a broken wrist today is clearly an emergency, and we would go during an earthquake like that. If you have a broken wrist, you're probably not going to get an ambulance. So in those instances, we'd ask neighbors to check on neighbors and do what you can. There's a lot of information at that website. We can help people with preparedness in terms of how to shut off your gas at your home, check for leaks, and those kinds of things. So we're available to do that. But 10:16 this morning, if you go to that website, for people who might be listening or might be in the audience, you can register, and at the very least, just read some of the information that's there. Carson City has one of the highest participation rates in the state of Nevada for the Shakeout. So at some point, I'd like to see us get up around 75%. I think we were in the mid-30s. And it's a real easy thing to do. Just go to that website. It takes about two minutes to register. So I appreciate it.
Stacy, what's the significance of the time? Is it just based on today's date?
Yeah, it's correct. They just pick this date, and they pick a time, and there is no significance to it. So. The other brief thing I wanted to mention is, in July 1st in 1964, the Carson City Board of Trustees officially hired a fire chief, and that marked the beginning of the paid fire department in Carson City. A couple of our members have been working to commemorate that, and they were able to do it by cooperating with the Nevada State Museum. And we're going to be striking a coin. On the backside of the coin will be what's on the back of every coin struck this year, the Sesko Centennial Coin. On the front side will be our logo with our department's name in the Maltese cross with commemorating 50 years. And we're fortunate enough, we just found out last week, to be able to strike that coin on Nevada Day. So we're pretty excited by that. It's at 11:00 a.m. at the museum in the mint, and the public is invited. The coins will be for sale. We'll provide you a free copy. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Stacy. Great information. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number six, approval of the minutes. What's the pleasure of the board?
If nobody has any corrections, I move to approve the minutes of July 3rd, 2014, as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number seven, adoption of the agenda. I understand items number 20B and C are being pulled under Public Works. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Then with that exception, we'll adopt the agenda as published. And I'll move on to item number eight, special presentations. I'll go down to the podium, and I think I saw Betsy come in. And then after that, we'll have the presentation of Length of Service Awards, and I'll ask the board to come down in front of the DS. Maybe one of these. Yeah, just blanket. Sounds good. Well, today I have the pleasure of a proclamation for Conflict Resolution Day. Whereas October 16th is celebrated worldwide as Conflict Resolution Day, and whereas the purpose of Conflict Resolution Day is to, number one, promote awareness of mediation, arbitration, conciliation, and other creative peaceful means of resolving conflict; two, promote the use of conflict resolution in schools, families, businesses, communities, governments, and the legal system; three, recognize the significant contributions of peaceful conflict resolvers; and four, obtain national synergy by having celebrations happen across the country and around the world on the same day. And whereas the Nevada Dispute Resolution Coalition is a nonprofit whose mission is to promote public awareness of processes that encourage collaborative solutions, and whereas the resolution of disputes can be extremely costly and time-consuming when advanced through litigation and formal court proceedings, and many persons desire alternatives to conflict, and whereas alternative dispute resolution offers an option for businesses, consumers, families, landlords, and neighborhoods and others to resolve conflicts in an expeditious and cost-effective manner, as well as in a manner that may preserve the relationship of the parties, and whereas alternative dispute resolution is an important asset to the citizens of Carson City. Now therefore, Karen Aboud, as Mayor Pro Tem, on behalf of Robert L. Kroll, Mayor of Carson City, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 16th, 2014, as Conflict Resolution Day in and for Carson City, and I encourage all Carson City citizens, businesses, families, institutions, and neighborhoods to consider alternatives to litigation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm not sure who wants to speak, but go right ahead.
Go ahead, Betsy.
We're just very pleased to have this opportunity to highlight something that's good for families, good for communities, good for businesses, to protect their bottom line, for everybody to avoid the turmoil of conflict, and to learn conflict resolution skills. Anybody can learn how to manage sort of the messy human interaction that makes part of our day-to-day reality, and we encourage the community, leadership organizations, and businesses, and families to look at other ways of resolving conflict. Thank you.
Can we get your name for the record, please? Your name?
B-E-T-S-Y. Kosier. K-O-S-I-E-R.
Thank you.
And I'm Nancy Cleaves, C-L-E-A-V-E-S, and Victor E-S. I would just add that NDRC, Nevada Dispute Resolution Coalition, is a really nice resource for dispute resolution. If you have any questions or any interest, we're available to provide that information to you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, ask the board to come down. Okay, so we'll pull that one. Well, now we have a presentation of Length of Service Awards for our city employees, and I'd like to call up for longevity award Stacy Belt in recognition of 10 years of continuous dedication to service for Carson City. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That's for you. Thank you. All right, just go ahead.
Down over here.
Yes. Photo op time. And is James Estes here today?
Hi.
Hi, James. I'd like to recognize you and appreciation for 10 years of continuous dedication to Carson City. Thank you. And is Gina Lee here today?
Hi.
Gina, I'd like to recognize you and recognize with appreciation 10 years of continuous dedication to Carson City. Thank you so much. And is Bill Lacome here today? Lacome?
Bill, I'd like to recognize you with appreciation for 20 years of service to Carson City. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Wow, 20 years. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
And Robin Houston? Thank you, Alan, for correcting me. Hi, Robin.
Hi.
Robin, I'd like to recognize with appreciation 25 years of continuous dedication of service to Carson City. Thank you so very much. Thank you all for your time and dedication. It's appreciated. And I think we're going to do a little photo op. Okay.
So can I have a couple of you kind of get a little bit closer for me? Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
Kenny, are you going to take us through this?
Yes, Queen Karen. Real quickly, this is an action to approve a grant from joining forces in the amount of $35,285. Notably, this is a multi-jurisdictional grant in which $5,645 has currently been authorized to proceed. If this grant, if the remaining amount of the monies does not get funded by the federal government, the grant will end after the third event in December.
Thank you, Kenny. I'll open this up to the board for discussion. Any questions?
Make a motion.
All right. Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I move to accept the Nevada Department of Public Safety Office of Traffic Safety Grant JF-2015-CCSO-00026, joining forces in the amount of $35,285, and allow the use of funds as authorization to proceed documents are issued.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item number 10. Is Al here? Is he going to take us through this? Who's going to take us through this? City manager, Marina?
So this item is just to approve the removal of taxes that occurred fiscal year 13 and 14 on a Palo Verde Drive. Al's not here, so I can't really speak any further to it, but if you have any questions, we'll be sure to address them.
Open it up to the board for questioning.
Not for questions, just for a comment. There's a discussion in the packet. Basically, the property is owned by the Sierra Nevada Community Land Trust, a nonprofit organization, and that's why the taxes are being waived.
Any further discussion from the board? Public comment on this issue? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I move to approve the removal of taxes that have occurred fiscal year 2013 and fiscal year 2014, tax years for parcel 004141-05, Palo Verde Drive, per NRS 361.060, in the amount of $527.41.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now we are going to recess as the Board of Supervisors, and I'm going to ask Sheriff Furlong and Susan Pintar to come up to the DS, if you would. And I'll turn the gavel over to Dr. Pintar. Thank you.
We'll call the board of health to order, and call the roll, please.
Member Furlong?
Here.
Member Bonkowski?
Here.
Member about?
Here.
Member McKenna?
Here.
Member Shirk?
Here.
Chair Pintar?
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right. We invited him up, I know. Some of us have been waiting a long time to sit next to this fellow. Although I notice you people are all edging away, but that's okay. I'd like to entertain any public comment of a topic relevant to the authority of the Board of Health. Seeing none, I will go on to my report. I have three projects on the table to mention briefly. First, our grant-funded cross-jurisdictional sharing project with Douglas County is nearly at a close. This has been very successful in establishing disease-reporting mechanisms, restaurant inspections, pool inspections, et cetera, and has raised the level of service to both communities of both Carson City and Douglas County at, I might say, a reduced cost compared with the state. We have received very positive reviews from the granters and plans are to continue these shared services indefinitely. I think it's worth noting that the fees involved have stayed the same or even dropped slightly, but the level of service has improved for both counties. Secondly, we continue to explore alternatives for allocation to conduct sexual assault exams. In the meanwhile, all victims must be transported to Reno for this part of the evaluation. I want to emphasize to the public, however, that the other parts of the sexual assault response team remain strong. Our sheriff's officers receive special training to deal sensitively with victims of sexual assault. There's a victim's advocate stationed at the district attorney's office, and the cases continue to be aggressively pursued. We are very lucky in our community to have a strong core of Sexual Assault Response, or SARA, advocates. You may have seen the acronym SARA, and that's the Sexual Assault Response Advocate Volunteers. And these women respond to every case of sexual assault. They accompany the victim through the initial intake, through the exam, through all follow-up care, and through all psychological follow-up care and counseling. This SARA program is part of the Advocates to Endomestic Violence. And so, though we have a struggle in one part of our community's response to victims of sexual assault, our other services do remain strong. Finally, our point of dispensing, or pod exercise, where we get to shoot people legally, is scheduled for Friday, October 25th, in the afternoon. We have received 4,000 doses of vaccines and are ready to shoot. Nikki will have some more details in her report. Questions?
Susan, I know you addressed it, but in terms of a location for the sexual assault exams, are we any closer to a resolution on that issue than we were?
We are no closer than we were at our meeting that you were in attendance at. We do have a couple of locations as possibilities, but they all have some struggles, primarily with, they have to have a confidential, they have to be confidential in the sense that they have to be a place where both victims and the advocates feel safe in being at all hours of the day and night, and they have to have appropriate medical facilities. And that's a combination that hospitals have, but very few other community resources have. So we continue, we continue to have you in the loop as far as meetings. So let's see, do you have to, yeah, I guess so. Hit it.
I move to accept the health officer's report and give direction to staff on CCHHS activities.
Thank you. Motion and second. I've been received. Any discussion? Hearing none? Those opposed? I mean, yeah. Oh, I like it. Very good. Clever. Those in favor? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, I didn't hear any opposition, so all right. So Mrs. Aker, would you be so kind as to present your report?
Thank you, Dr. Pintar. So this is the director's report. So I'm going to start with Human Services, and as you can see, our total monthly appointments are on an upward trend, and this does include people that are seen by our volunteer, Renetta, who helps individuals sign up for Medicaid. This does not include those people that are under our workforce program. So the programs that it does include are Burials, General Assistance, Rental Assistance, Utility Assistance, and our ADRC, which is Aging Disability Resource Center. And we recently have hired a part-time case manager for the ADRC, and she's very busy, and that will cover Carson City and Douglas County, but she's been focusing her efforts in Carson City mainly right now and is starting to see more in Douglas County. For Clinical Services, I just want to note, I've got a lot of slides on this. I'm going to go through them pretty quickly. I put one slide on each page, so you can at least read what the slide says. So in August of this year, we conducted our annual tobacco use survey, and there were 240 Clinical Services Title X patients, that's the family planning patients, which were surveyed, and these results will also be reviewed in the upcoming Clinical Services Quality Improvement Team. So in this survey, first, one of the questions, and I haven't addressed all the questions that were asked in the survey, I just picked certain questions to address here. So as you can see, that 25% reported that they do smoke cigarettes, and 6% said that they have quit, or 69% said that they do not smoke cigarettes. And if they answered yes, then this says how many per day, and as you can see, it ranges from zero to, someone had reported 16, or excuse me, someone had reported 10, and that was reported by 16 people. And if they reported that they smoked, how many years have they smoked? So there were approximately eight people that reported about five years of smoking, and it, as you can see, it has ranged from zero to the, on up to 21 years. This question asks about if smoking or chewing tobacco, you know, have you considered either quitting? You've actually set a date, you cut down, and no, you don't want to quit at this time. So this graph, all those in red show that, yes, they have, you know, the first one, 64 people said that they had thought about, oops, had thought about quitting, and 61 cut down. So I won't go through each of these, but as you can see, that, and another significant one here is that 98 said that, no, they have not set a date to quit. So this is talking about during our visit to the clinic, if they were asked if they smoked tobacco, and 185 people reported that, yes, they were asked. And then this one asks the question, were they advised, if they smoked, were they advised to quit smoking? And here, so we, looking at this graph, we've got some work to do, and 107 have reported that, no, they were not advised to quit. So this will be looked at from our Quality Improvement Team, and, you know, we'll put a project into place, looking at this.
Nikki, I'd also like to add that these statistics help validate what we know from a state perspective, is that, if my memory serves correctly, approximately 22% of Nevadans smokes, or 26% in a somewhat younger population is consistent with that. But it adds additional detail so that as a health department, we can tailor our services more appropriately to our community, as opposed to just what we know about the state.
Nikki, can I ask a quick question? If I saw the number correctly, the total number of respondents was about 220-some, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Of which 25% said they smoked. But yet, on these statistics, we have almost 200 people that are answering questions about how they smoke. So I'm just wondering why the numbers don't jive. You don't have to answer now, but if you could just give back to me, let me know.
Yeah, I'll look more into that.
Because looking at all this information, it's like...
Or not.
Yeah.
I'll look into, you know, and dive more into it. Okay, so now I want to talk about our epidemiologically, epidemiologic program. And so I wanted to report on our current flu update, and this is where, as Dr. Pintar alluded, about our pod, our appointed distribution or dispensment, that's taking place on October 24th. That's a Friday, and it's at Public Works, 2:00 to 6:00, and this is where people can get their flu shots. And we were, we didn't know if we were going to be able to do this this year, and... And we did get a grant from the state, which has allowed this. So, it's going to be a drive-by, like it was last year. And so, we're able to offer this to the public again. And in, besides that, we've been very active, and I'll report further in my report here, about, we've been very active with the school-located vaccination program. So, going into the schools and giving vaccinations. And we've been in other areas also. And we're heading some of the daycares. We've went into the state and some of their departments and have vaccinated. We've done senior centers. We've done some health fairs. So, we are working very hard to get out there.
Nikki, can I just ask a question with regards to this? And you may be addressing this later, but with the enterovirus, how are you interacting with that issue?
I'll let Dustin, he can speak more on some of that right now. He's our disease investigator.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Epidemiologist.
For the record, Dustin Booth, in regards to the enterovirus D68, we are working with healthcare providers and authorizing tests to be done. We currently still have not found any in the state of Nevada. So, there's not been any positive tests, but we are evaluating, you know, we, the hospital usually evaluates a patient, and then we authorize the test to be done. Just because it's such a specialized test, the labs, either the CDC or the state of California lab just can't handle a large volume, so we're being selective on who gets tested. But at this point, there have not been any positives.
And going back to the flu right now, it's basically, there's been no activity. And we work with the state to get the information. They have a system in which we can get that information, and the hospital does report any flu-like illnesses into that system. So, our public health emergency preparedness, I'm going to just touch on a few things here, and then you can read the rest. But September was National Preparedness Month, so they participated in a Build a Preparedness Kit workshop on September 13th. They participated in a first aid booth at the Candy Dews. And they participated in our health fair on August 9th, the city's health fair. And then, here's where the school-located vaccination program report is. We've done 11 Douglas County schools for approximately 1,500 vaccinations. And then, we began on October 6th, our program in Carson City. And we've had a very successful program so far, and given out a lot of flu shots to the kids. And our clinic schedule and any forms that need to be filled out for those flu shots are on our website. And the training exercises and presentations, of course, for our vaccination clinics and the pod, we've had screener and vaccinator training. And also, the administrative support, those are the people that are looking at the forms, making sure they're filled out correctly. So, all that training took place for, and we utilize MRC volunteers, which is the Medical Reserve Corps. We utilize those volunteers for these different positions in the clinics. We participated in a closed pod flu vaccination table-talk exercise at the hospital on October 9th. And of course, we've been very busy planning for the pod exercise or the flu shot. And we're doing one, like I said, Carson City, and then we're also doing one in Douglas County.
There actually be two in Douglas County.
Oh, that's right. There is two. And then, this is a list of the coalitions and partnerships. You know, we've had, we participate in with all these different groups. And so, I've just listed them all out here, so you can see what we've been busy with. One thing that is, will be coming in October 2015, is the RAM event. That's the Remote Area Medical. That's where they have the dental services, the medical services for people that don't have insurance, can't afford. So, that will be happening in October 2015. And that was happened, that took place in Reno this past year, so. For our Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion Program, we had the Safe Routes to School, excuse, through the Safe Routes to School, we had walked School Day on August, October 8th. And we had seven Carson City schools participate, with about a 40% participation rate. So, so they had a lot of fun that day, and will continue to do that. Also, within this program, we have the Abstinence Program. So, in the, there's two different programs. We've got the Abstinence, and then we've got the Comprehensive, we call the PrEP program. In the Abstinence, we had 68 total participants completed in year three, which was October 1st of last year, to September 30th of this year. Sessions are being scheduled for the upcoming year with Silver State Charter School, Carson Valley Boys and Girls Club, and then they're venturing out and trying to get other organizations on board. Through the PrEP program, we've had 26 participants complete a pilot project that went from May 1st to September 30th. And within this program, three sessions have been held at Rite of Passage. The classes are either male-only or female-only. And so, there's been two classes for male-only and one for female-only. And then, we were granted another full award to continue on with this program. And that grant cycle runs October 1st of 2014 to September 30th of 2015. So, it was a continuation of our grant. And then, we still have our accreditation efforts moving forward. We had our first training for the Documentation Committee. And that Documentation Committee will review all the documents that the team has put together. And this is a committee that has not been intricately involved in preparing the documents, so it's a fresh set of eyes looking at the documents. And we continue to build our performance management system that's being used internally to improve upon our processes and programs. And we've got a workforce development plan that's been approved by our managers and will be implemented in January 2015. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion for approval. Or comment? I'm sorry, is there public comment? Thank you.
I move to accept the director's report and give direction to staff on CCHHS activities.
Motion and second? Motion and second, or is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Gotcha. Thank you. Motion passes. Let's see, fine, fine. Thank you. Elaine, I would like to introduce Elaine Bergenhire, who has been a variety, she's been in a variety of positions with the department. Her current specialty is in the Health Insurance Portability Act, as commonly known as HIPAA. And Elaine is going to give us a brief report on what we all should know about HIPAA.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, Elaine Bergenhire, I'm the HIPAA Compliance Officer at Carson City Health and Human Services. So, what I'm going to do today is give you a brief overview of what our change process has been in response to the newest HIPAA guidelines. As we know, HIPAA's been around since the 90s. It's not a new word, it's not a new concept. What happened in the last couple of years is the government handed down new regulations. And so, it's really changed the face of HIPAA for us. There's a ton of new stuff in there, and part of that is an enforcement rule, which is key. And as you know, at the Health Department, we offer clinical healthcare services and are therefore required to abide by HIPAA. So, in the document, in response to it, I've been the HIPAA Privacy Officer for a while. With all the changes coming through, we thought we needed a HIPAA compliance team. And so, that team consists of myself, Nikki Aker, and Veronica Galis, who's our Director of Clinical Services. So, the first thing, first order of business for us to do, as required in the HIPAA regulations, was to conduct a risk assessment. So, risk assessments, by their very nature, are not necessarily always fun. They can be daunting and overwhelming, and I can assure you, it was. It is ongoing. We meet every two weeks. We've taken this very seriously. We adopted a risk assessment tool. For any of you who've gone to HHS.gov and looked at the regulation, it's this thick. So, in order to effectively incorporate all that change, we needed a tool to do so. So, basically, with the tool, there are 159 measures in the tool. Basically, those measures are questions. We ask ourselves in an overview, what are we doing at the Health Department to respond to HIPAA? How can we line up with the guidance? It's been very interesting, and I think that we are well on our way to meeting almost all of those measures. What was probably the most interesting is even though the federal government gives you the document that says you have to comply with this, they don't really tell you how you have to do it. So, we adopted our own risk assessment tool. Since then, I think, actually, HHS.gov has put out their own risk assessment tool now. But the deadline to have a risk assessment in place was September of last year. We met that guideline. That doesn't mean we had to have all the measures met, it means we had to know where we stood with all those measures. So, that's been ongoing. Like I say, we meet for two hours every two weeks to discuss this. As a result, you know, we've really been proactive and made a ton of change, some of which has involved policy changes. We've been very aggressive in our policy changes at the Health Department. We take this very seriously, and we want to be in compliance with this. An example of a policy change might be, we now have a visitor login at our front desk in Human Services. We never had that before, we have it now, that's a policy change. We do security audits, door audits, to make sure that people who are accessing the building have reason to be there, that they're employees of ours. We do electronic medical record audits, to make sure that the people who are in our electronic medical record have a reason to be in there. So, those are just a few examples. There's been many changes, those are a few examples. The binder that I have with me is our guidance. It's our security of all the change documents. And we've been very good at documenting how we're invoking this change, when the change occurs. The federal government, basically, their enforcement activity is based on your level of intent. So, if there were ever an audit or an investigation, we have full documentation that says, this was our intent. We moved forward with a good faith effort to comply to all these. What doesn't work is we go, yeah, we knew about it, we just, we didn't have time to do it. That's unacceptable. And in our risk assessment, we have clear and concise documentation that we are making efforts to comply with everything. So, as a result with that, we've been collaborating with other city departments. IT is our new best friend. There are some components in the technical safeguards part of the risk assessment that involve IT heavily. And so, for us, that's mostly encryption. You know, it's the nature of the beast with electronic communications, the way they are, that we discovered we cannot get around communicating electronically. We just can't do it. And so, therefore, in order to protect and honor that information, we have to work with IT for encrypted servers, thumb drives, email, whatever. All of our databases have to be protected by encryption, shows good faith effort. That doesn't mean nothing's going to happen, it means we've taken every precaution we can to protect the records, both the physical safety of the record and our electronic environment. So, what else? We offer yearly training. So, we just finished our second annual yearly training. So, what happens is we go through this risk assessment, it's a fluid document for us, it's never-ending, it's never going to end. So, we go through it, and we go, yes, we met it, go through the whole document, probably it's going to take a year. The second year, you look at it and go, do we still meet this? We didn't take this out of policy, did we? Are we practicing this? It's in policy. Can we prove that we do it? And so, that's just kind of our self-check. When we make policy changes, they're enacted in September, and that's when we do our employee trainings. So, when we do the trainings, we can say, employees, here's the new policy, and here's why we're doing it. Give them a chance to answer, ask questions, we can answer them, and so that we, they can understand that it lines up with the assessment. What am I missing, Nikki? What else? Any questions so far?
Not so much a question, but more, actually, it's a thought, and we'll see where it goes. Carson City has an audit committee, which is basically a bunch of citizens that like accounting, that are trying to help the finance department, et cetera. Would they be, and we also have an outside consultant, Moss Adams, that looks at things, would they be helpful in your security arrangements, or do you think you have enough? That sort of thing. Just an outside set of eyes, a professional set of eyes, that sort of thing.
What we've recently discussed, and jump in any minute, is we've talked about conducting our own mock audits. So, for this, you know, we've been looking at this document for a year, and we've been writing policy, and we think that we're all great. But maybe an internal set of eyes to come in and do a mock audit for us, to see how we shape up with the guidance, we've recently talked about that.
Yeah, and there's, we're looking at different audit tools, that, there's, there's a wide variety of audit tools out there. And so, we're now starting to look at these different audit tools and seeing which tools to use. And I don't, you know, at this point, you know, we, until we go through these audit tools, you know, bringing in a outside consultant like Moss Adams, I'm not sure if that's the way to go or not yet, so.
I'm not sure, I know it's not audit in the sense of a financial audit. It's audit in the sense of, are we doing the, do we have the appropriate best practices, the appropriate safeguards for medical information?
Yeah, the only reason I bring it up is, is they do this, they do everything, let me tell you. The, it's there, the city manager knows about it, and I would just offer, an outside set of eyes comes in and says Carson City is doing a good job, means a lot more than an inside set of eyes saying Carson City does a good job.
Correct.
But I understand the inside set of eyes has to be comfortable that they're doing a good job before they're ready for outsiders to come and look. So, it's there.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Elaine. Are there other questions or comments, or any public questions or comments about her Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go on to Item D. As you are all aware, at this stage of the game, we do have a Community Health Improvement Plan, which we fondly refer to as CHIP. There are a number of issues on there, and a number of our community members, community leaders chair those individual issues. Today, we've asked Kathy Bartosz to come and report on any progress our community has made in dealing with alcohol and substance abuse, which is Item J, Issue J.
Good morning, and I'm Kathy Bartosz, Director of Partnership Carson City, for the record. You know, it's really interesting, when you talk about controlling alcohol and drug abuse in your community, it's sort of like taking a toddler into a dangerous environment and realizing, oh my God, don't touch that, and you're putting that up, and then they head over here, and you put that up, and you're putting everything up about three feet up off the ground. And there's still those things that are down low, and they look around, and they head right for the electrical socket. And why do they do these things? Well, it's two, it's two reasons, and it's the same two reasons that people fall into dangerous situations with alcohol and drugs. The stuff's available, and they have a low perception of risk. In the case of toddlers, it's, they're unhampered by any sense of intelligence, too. But, so, when we're looking at drugs and alcohol in our community, basically, when we put together a strategic plan, it's that simple. We're looking at how do we reduce the availability, and how do we keep that perception of risk in check, a reasonable sense of risk? So, when we do that prevention plan, that's what we look at. We also look at, there are people that don't have anything to risk. And we work with those individuals to create a better life engagement for them, so that they now have something to risk that prevents them from making foolish decisions. So, given some of the things we've looked at in the past, in 2005... So, given some of the things we've looked at in the past, in 2005, the sheriff was one of the planning members of Partnership Carson City around methamphetamine. Now, we talk about availability and perception of risk. That's an easy one. That's an easy one. He commanded a multidisciplinary team, and he had everybody at the table. JPO is there, DEA is there. They're all there. Lyon County was there. Douglas County was there. And they mapped out, they knew exactly where the meth was. They knew why it was coming through Carson City, and they knew where to stake out, and we saw that supply reduced. Perception of risk with methamphetamine is also very, very easy. All we have to do is slap up very real-time photos of, this is what a meth addict looks like. For a young person to look at that poster and think, I could look at that. I'm, I'm risking something, and it's something that's important to them, their appearance. So, that was a fairly easy one to demonstrate a perception of risk, because we know what kids listen to. They don't listen to death. That's not real to them, not until they're 25. That's not real to them, but their looks, and they saw the tweakers. They saw them in our community. It was real to them. So, that's not, that's not too tough a sell. Do we still have to work on it? Yes. In fact, the sheriff and I were just talking yesterday, and yeah, it's still here. It's back. Time to get the posters out again. Time to start educating parents what to look for. It's still a very real problem in our community. So, did we make headway with it? Absolutely. We went from 16% of our young people saying they experimented with methamphetamine, down to 4%. So, we are making significant progress on that one. Okay, here's the one that's not quite as easy, and that is the one that, I think, as the sheriff put it yesterday, is climbing up our dairy air. I think that was the word close enough. Yeah, it sure was. Anyway, is prescription drugs and heroin. And this is a very, very real problem. Now, again, let's look at our two factors, availability and perception of risk. The availability is not our ugly-looking drug dealers out there that everybody likes to see slammed to the ground and hauled off. It's our doctors. It's our dentists. It's our veterinarians. So, how do we, how do we contain supply with the people that we respect the most in our, in our lives? We educate them. We have to educate them. We have to get them to use a prescription drug monitoring program. This afternoon, Partnership Carson City is interviewing for a halftime person who will do nothing but that. She's, or he, is going to go to every single prescriber in our community and ask them, who within their office do they want trained to use this system? So that if somebody is going to be prescribed a narcotic, they will be able to tell if they've already been to the guy down the street, or if they just last month got four months' worth of pills, and now they're back. It's very important that we have the system hooked up in our community. We believe, I'm not so sure if our legislators this year are going to look at making that system mandatory. Right now, it is encouraged, and it is, and it is mandatory, and this is one success we've had, we're proud of, is that we have now got it so that when they go to re-license, they must register with the system. Now, it has to be mandatory that they use it. With heroin, here's the problem. We all remember, we're all within, well, 20 years of each other, in terms of our age. Heroin used to be what that guy underneath the bridge looked like, and he was a mess. There's a syringe hanging from his arm. It was a disgusting picture. That's not what kids see when they think of heroin now. They think of a natural substance. It's opium. It grows. It's a God-given thing. And the marketers are good. That little balloon of heroin that's circulating around the high school costs one-eighth of what one vicodin pill costs. So, once these kids get used to a prescription drug, synthetic narcotic, and they can't get that anymore, that guy is there. That guy's there with a natural substance. Why would you be taking that synthetic anyway? They don't see what we, what we visualized. We've got to bring that back somehow, and that, that one is a challenge. I will tell you upfront, that one is a huge challenge. Then we get into the ones that create our perfect storm, and those are our substances that are legalized in one capacity or another, and that's our alcohol or tobacco and our marijuana. Availability is increased because of the legal access, and the available, and the perception of harm is reduced because of very strategic marketing around these, around these substances. So, what do we have to do? We have to put the perception of risk where the parents, within the parents' hands, within our community's hands. You see a number of campaigns where people talk about, talk to your kid. Talk to your kid. So, that's the first step, and it's a good one. But then the conversation needs to go to Step Two, Three, and Four. I can talk to my kid about alcohol and say, gosh, I saw in the paper last night. Did you know this kid? And, yeah, yeah, I know him, you know, he's a jerk. Okay, fine. So, you know, but this situation is really, it troubles me. It troubles me. So, I want to make sure that you and I have a clear expectation. My expectation of you is that you will not drink at all. Zero tolerance. Is that an expectation that I can expect you to have of yourself? Sure, Mom, because he'll say anything to get the car keys. Sure, Mom. Good, good. I'm glad we have that understanding. But I want you to also understand that if for any reason you don't live up to that expectation, I have other expectations of you, and that is wherever you are, you will call me, and your dad or I will come get you, and it will be a very quiet ride home. And the next day, we will have a discussion about which of these three things you're going to lose, and for how long. Your car keys, your cellphone, your freedom. And we will have that conversation. Does this seem fair to you? I mean, I'm hoping we don't get to Stage Three here. Does it sound fair to you? Sure, Mom, yeah, it sounds fair. Okay, then there's one more thing I want you to tell you, I want to tell you. I love you so much that sometimes I look at you, and it takes my breath away. I love you too, Mom. Thank you. That's the conversation that needs to happen. Not that, I'm really worried. You're never going to do this, are you? No, Mom. Can I have the car keys now? Sure. See the difference? This is the message we're trying to get out to parents right now, to create a policy that works within their home. Here's the other big success that falls back on this, too, and this is around alcohol. You, as the Board of Supervisors, Liquor Board, did a really good thing. You implemented responsible beverage server training, and you implemented compliance checks, and you held their feet to their fire. There was a consequence for those people that came back before you for a third and fourth time with a compliance check violation because they provided alcohol to kids. As a result of that, Carson City has the highest compliance rates in the state of Nevada. Your compliance rates were issued consistently. People were trained with responsible beverage server training. They were given that opportunity. They know why that law's in place. They know how the checks are going to happen, and the checks happened. And if they flunked, they saw you. That's how we get on top of these things. Supply and demand, availability and perception of risk. That's what we need to do. And you do that with policy in your home and in your community. That's how that happens. Okay, let's real quickly, I know, I apologize for getting this too late. I was struggling. I was trying to get it to fit on a legal, on a letter-size thing, and finally gave up. What we did with this, and this is the plan that we're rolling forward with, on the top, you see our mission statement. It's very broad. We don't specify drugs and alcohol because it's a much bigger picture than that. We have our goals listed. We have a multi-source assessment. The sheriff and I had a conversation yesterday. We had quite a few conversations, or the day before, and one of them was around getting more reliable data that we can bank on. Right now, we use the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is not as reliable as we would like it to be. The only thing we really use it for, it's issued every two years, we use it for trending data. One snapshot in time doesn't give us much, but if we see a trending occurring, then we take a look at that, and we move forward on that. This is right now with Richard Stokes, and once he has a chance to review and make sure I don't have any, any errors in here, then I'll be happy to make it available, available to you. Once we've got it, vetted out, it's still in draft form. Okay, I want to make sure I give, leave time for Hannah in the back of the room, whose baby right now is sleeping, so I, we want, we got to move quick here. We want to facilitate collaboration. It takes a whole community effort. We have a Community Action Agency Network. They meet once a month, and they're meeting tomorrow. We'd like to advocate on behalf of our community for ordinances and policies and practices that can help reduce substance abuse. Substance abuse, mental health, and education issues, that is one of Hannah's areas, and she's out in this community all the time. The demand for her services and her presentations is very high. People want this information, and you'll see why today. Mental health, we're pulling that in. Right now, we realize the divide between mental health and substance abuse is not there. There's a real blending there. We need a lot of co-occurring order, disorder services, and this is one of the things that we're ramping up this year. So, I'll tell you a little bit about that. We look at what services are needed, and then we pilot them in this community. And once they're all vetted and ready to go, we hand them over to whatever other agency in our community can handle that and move forward. We need to increase treatment. This is where I really want you to get your pencils out and write this down. We do not have enough treatment in this community for substance abuse. We do not have any adequate treatment for substance abuse, mental health, co-occurring disorders for people who can't afford to pay. We need to look at this, and you need to look at this very seriously. This is a very big problem, and this is one area that we have not done well in.
Let me ask. Why haven't we done well?
It takes money. It takes money, and it takes locations. Right now, you have Community Counseling Center, which is your nonprofit treatment center, and they had to scale down. They had to, they had to cut away from their residential services. They had to cut away from all their adolescent services. They are now treating, treating adults only on outpatient basis, and it's down to money. Basically, when the state issued new state funding for them this past year, their idea was to give them half of what they'd given them the year before, and you have them use all that money within a six-month period, and then that would give them six months to become Medicaid proficient. That didn't happen. It doesn't happen that easily. Even when you have a bill for Medicaid, and you've figured out the six-page form you have to fill out to get reimbursed for a $6 prescription, it takes sometimes up to four months for them to reimburse. Nonprofits can't work that way.
Is all funding from a, does the funding you receive only come from the state, or do you get anything locally to help fund this?
Right now, we have, there's, there's one pot of state money, and then there's block grant funding that comes from the federal government through the state. They have people on a sliding fee scale, and I believe through your city funds, you do give some money to Community Counseling Center, but I'm not sure on the amount this year. But it's really a problem. Vitality Center, as I think you know, has stepped in, and they're taking over the residential. They, too, are having serious issues with Medicaid changing course and going about things differently, limiting bed space, counting their facility in Alco along with the beds in Carson City and saying, hey, you're over 16 beds. You don't qualify for Medicaid. And they're going, well, no, half are out there, and half are here. So, it's been, it's been an ongoing battle. Not that it can't all be worked out, but we need, we need these services, so.
Well, sticking along the same lines on funding, you receive from the state, and you've received some from local, but I know I'm on the board with Nikki, and is that something we can discuss at that, when we get to that board again in coming up next month, the funding?
Within the Health Department, I mean, there's not, we don't have a program for the mental health piece at this point. So, within what we're discussing, we're discussing what's already there, and definitely will be discussing as time goes on where we, what services are important to the Health Department, and in what direction we want to go.
But presently...
Presently, there's no funding.
No funding.
No, no.
But funding can come from...
Well, I think, I think it's the same sources that Kathy is mentioning, is that the, the major sources of funding are either direct, are through the federal government, funneled through the state, or through the state, or local efforts. And as a Health Department, we're, we're not allowed, the Health, to solicit for those local efforts, but that's where Kathy's group comes in. The, the Health agencies are allowed to apply for specific grant funding, and that's also what we're coordinating.
Probably one of the more significant treatment, actual treatment initiatives that's taken place is the one that's going on currently in the jail, and that is on the very last page of here. But we were able to secure a $250,000 grant through a very good collaborative effort, and what we're doing is we're relocating state mental health workers into the jail. They actually come to the jail two days a week now. They go to where the clients are. Dr. Joe McElster, most of you know him, he's the forensic psychologist. He does the initial assessment, finds out if any medications are needed for them to stabilize them. And then Mary Bryan, who's the Director of Community Counseling Center, she's out there 20 hours a week now, working and getting those people while they're still there, where you can contain them and work with them. And the psychiatric caseworker from the state is there. So, basically, getting the state resources and local resources to all get in there where these guys are. 22% of them are frequent flyers in, in the sheriff's jail. 22% frequent flyers. So, they're back in, and that means more than two times they're in for mental health and substance abuse issues. The sheriff would like to elaborate on this. Any, any things out of your program?
Just wanted to touch on one other, spike on it. We have initiated this same program with Ms. Becca Bock from the State Health outside of the jail. In other words, on a, on a limited basis at this point in time, she is riding with patrol officers and going to these calls for service and looking for alternatives other than jail to resolve the issues.
We had a crazy guy walk into our building at Partnership Carson City, and we were in lockdown. Next thing I know, I made a call to, to 911, and here came Becca Bock with a SWAT, a SWAT jacket on, along with two police officers. And I go, he already left. He's wandering down, down the street. So, they were able to pick him up, but they were a very rapid response situation, and this, this man was, you know, he had, he wasn't thinking clearly, so. Anyway, so it works.
Kathy?
Yes.
Just to back up on the mental health aspect of things, and funding and so forth, how do you engage with NAMI, number one? And number two, what concerns me, and I've mentioned it before, the teen screen that was federally funded, which went away, and a lot of the substance abuse and things of that nature, all of that correlates. And can, how do we get back into the school system to screen kids ahead of time to kind of prevent?
Okay, those are good questions. So, I'll, do you want me to start with the NAMI one? If you'll look on, I'm trying to find it right now.
For the record, NAMI is...
NAMI is the National Alliance of Mental Illness. And if you'll look on the bottom of Page Six in your plan there, those four are all the result of initial engagements with NAMI. What they're doing is they're starting the In Our Own Voice Program, and that is having people who have experienced mental illness in their lifetime, where they've ended up on the streets, they've ended up in jail, they've ended up in and out of psychiatric units, and finally, they've come out and seen, they walked into the light and found, and found finally a way where they could maintain and function society. They will be coming into our middle school and high school health classes, every single one of them, and presenting to those kids about, this is what mental illness is, in an effort with ultimate goal to be to remove the stigma of it, and to help them understand how people feel when they're living in that body, and how it hurts them when people don't understand that this is really a medical issue that they're dealing with. So, that is one of the first programs we're doing. The second one is the Family-to-Family Support Group, and that is for families that are, have a family member who's suffering from mental illness. We've gotten a lot of calls from parents in tears, who are just going, I don't know what to do. He's back in jail for the third time. I can't get him to keep his medications going. So, we're very excited about this program. The training occurred, and so now they're ready to start, start the groups peer-to-peer, and that is for the people who are actually mental, mentally coping with mental illness and needing some sort of a support system. And we're actually starting, we're hosting a class at Partnership Carson City beginning October 30th for, for that. And, let's see. Okay, basic training, and that is an actual class that parents can go to, or spouses can go to, that teach them in-home interactions and methods for helping individuals they struggle with their, with their mental illness. It's more structured. So, we've also taken one of our staff members, Rosario Espinoza, and she has now been trained in three of these, so that it can all be provided in Spanish. Our Spanish-speaking population still lives in shame when it comes to mental illness, and we need to get them out, and we need to make these services accessible to them as well. Moving on to teen screen, we, we had, we were out of the gate with that about two years ago, when Lyon County was doing it, and at that time, the school district was going through some horrendous budget cuts, as you might remember. as you might remember. It was not a good time. And teen screen brings with it quite a contentious group. It's a religious sector that will hit you on emails. They will hit you by... They do a phone harassment system. They are very active in promoting that teen screen is not a suicide prevention program for kids or an early identification program. It's a conspiracy by the pharmaceutical companies to get kids hooked on more drugs. End of story. They are very wrong, but they're also very annoying. So it was... The decision was made that at this point in time, they didn't want to bring it into Carson City. But I had a conversation with Richard Stokes. And there is a program that Kathleen Sandoval is promoting called Signs of Suicide. It's a very good program. And it begins by explaining to kids the difference between normal depression that you might experience just because you're living life and you're the age that you are, and depression where you really need to talk to somebody and who should you be talking to? How to identify these things in yourself and how to identify them in other people? On the day that we do this program, and we'll again roll it out through the health classes so we get most of our student body, again, in the middle of the high school, we have to have a team of people on campus, ready to talk to them. When they did this in Lyon County, they had three girls that went in immediately that day and said, "We're really concerned about this one guy who's in our chemistry class with us. We think he's going to kill himself." So sure enough, the counselor initially called them in and just said, "I just want to let you know, there's some... You have friends. You have friends that maybe you don't even know you have, who are very concerned about you." The kid started crying, pulled out his binder, opened it up, showed it to the counselor. There was his suicide plan already written out. Parents were immediately called. The psychologist stepped in. And that child's life was probably saved by those three girls. And tell me, they're not pumped up about themselves. Now they're looking for anybody that might be showing a sign. So but this is the kind of thing where it's increasing that nature of compassion among kids and having them be interceptors. So yeah, that's the one we're going to do instead and see how that goes. But we felt your pain on the teen screen, getting so far, almost to the brink of being able to do it and then having that happen.
Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate that.
I think it's worth noting that according to national statistics, and I have no reason to disbelieve that this is true for Nevada, at least 20%... 20 to 30% of mental illnesses begin by age 14. And at least 3/4 of them by age 24. So if we don't focus our efforts on the younger members of our society, we're going to miss an ideal opportunity to intervene.
Yeah. The other... And again, I know you can read through all of these and you'll see how they're... It's kind of... It's really messy trying to put a coalition and organize it on paper because people will come and say, "Hey, let's do a Signs of Suicide program." We go, "Okay, I got to put that on the graph somewhere." So what I did on here, just so you know, we have like nine broad goals. And when you look at the chart part of it, those nine goals are across going horizontally. And then going down, we divide what we do into actually five general categories. Community education and healthy living education, community prevention programs, secondary prevention intervention, which would be like the mental health, people are already showing signs of need, treatment, and law enforcement. As you can see on ours, the treatment and law enforcement did the perfect thing and they combined there in that one program that's running through PCC and the sheriff's office. So the only other one I wanted to mention to you is on page three. And number 10, 11, and 12, these are all brand new as of this summer. We've started the Drug Identification Training for Educational Professionals. It's an eight-hour course that law enforcement teach teachers. What they're seeing in front of them, that kid does not have allergies, he's high. That kind of thing. And then how do you work with your school's referral system to get that information to the parent so that there's some intervention and the situation's corrected? The second one is called Mental Health First Aid Training. Hannah, who'll be presenting to you in just a second, she is our trained trainer in mental health first aid. And she's getting calls all the time now. But basically, again, it's an eight-hour course. And the same way you would respond to somebody in a physical emergency, she's taught... She teaches them how to respond in a possible mental health emergency. Teachers are going to be trained in this. And we were training all of our nonprofits in the community as well. Anybody who wants it can get it. The last one is Dr. Mel Poole came out and trained our physicians a year and a half ago in signs and symptoms of actually opioid abuse. Let me start over again. Pain management and opioid abuse. And talking about alternatives to opioids for pain management with their clients. And a lot of them learned some very startling information when he presented. And what now what we would like to do is do something we did before, and I think I mentioned it to you, is getting our law enforcement officers, our public defenders, and our DA, deputy DAs into the same train in two hours. He can let them know what some of these people they're working with are actually experiencing, what their addiction is like, and where they need to be sent for help. So it's really an eye-opener. And so these are the things we're coming along with that are new and different than what we've been continuing and refining. If you have any questions on this sheet, you're free... You all know how to get ahold of me. And I will be happy to answer your questions now or as they come up to you. And we are going to be posting this for our viewers at home. This document, I did figure out how to get it onto a letter-sized document in the wee hours last night. And it will be on our website for anybody who wants to pull it down and review. And again, anyone can call and ask questions or access these services as they feel the need to.
Let me just make a comment on the Mental Health First Aid Training. There have been a number of employees from the Health Department, both from the clinic side, the human services side, that have went through this training.
Not to labor on the issue, but going back to mental illness and the lack of funding, I think that's something this board should look at in the future. But I do want to touch base and go back to something you mentioned about hiring somebody who was a part-time to look at prescriptions that citizens would acquire. Can you elaborate on that just a little more?
Yes. What it is, it's a prescription drug monitoring program. It's a national network where physicians can log on. They have to enter in anyone they're giving a narcotic prescription to. So it goes into a national database. Then any doctor, any prescriber can access it. Not anybody, because it's health records, so there's HIPAA and all sorts of stuff. But the doctor can go in there or his staff can go in there and issue... When they enter that person in their name or their number pops up, and then they can see their history of narcotic abuse. And so that's a good way of identifying, you know, people who may be an alternative.
In our state, when I re-up my medical license, I am required to register for this program so that I could have access to it. As Kathy mentioned, I am not currently required to use the program. And therein lies some of the controversy. So it is available to all the physicians and all the dentists. I don't believe that it's available to other... To the veterinarians at this stage of the game, but it might be. The... There are certain specialties within medicine that account for more prescriptions of opioid narcotics, as you can imagine. And so the state efforts are targeting those specialties as well. But I do agree that it would... For anybody who writes a narcotic prescription, it is to protect themselves as well in their best interests to check this database. So once prescribers understand that, I think it'll be more successful.
Yeah, we're having a whole professional training put together by, you know, a nurse in Las Vegas who's going to train. Most of coalitions are going to hire somebody like this. I'm hiring one on behalf of Carson City and Douglas County because a lot of our practitioners here also have an office in Douglas County. So we're going to try and extend the reach and help out our sister coalition down there. So anyway, yeah, when that person comes on board, they will be trained in how to actually sell it to the doctors as well. There's liability issues, client enhancing client care issues that can be used to help them sell this program, not only in the fact that it's the right thing to do.
I just wanted to say, I think that's a great program and something that's the community could benefit from. So is that something that the Assembly could look at in making it a mandatory of doctors?
You know what? They've been talking about it. They're going back and forth on it right now. The last conversation I had with somebody was that they're not going to go for that this year. They're looking at naloxone and the Good Samaritan Law and a couple of others first. But they're hoping that we can give them a year of doing the education with the doctors so that we can get more voluntary compliance. But then I just heard somebody else say that, "Well, no, they just heard from one of the members of the industry coalition," which is Doctors Associations, dentists, retail association, they're all part of that. Coalitions were a part of that, "that they might be going for it, that the AG might be encouraging them to do that." So we'll find out when the BDRs come out.
Thank you.
Which we watch real closely.
Kathy, how does medical marijuana enter into this sort of screening, same process? I know it's not listed as a narcotic, but will it be a part of this same record-keeping?
No. Right now, it's... That's all being handled by the state, by their screening system. For example, if somebody has a concern, for example, about a particular physician in their community, which I do, they can call the state and make a, you know, issue a concern. They can watch for it and see if there's a whole number of, you know, prescriptions coming from any one physician that maybe look over the top. Or I don't know if they're able to monitor patients though. Because once they get the card, they get the card.
They're not.
So no, this is for simply narcotics only. So any of your opioid-based drugs, oxycodone.
The two systems are fairly different, unfortunately. One, the narcotic prescribing one can monitor both patients and prescribers. The medical marijuana can only monitor prescribers. And even then, only if there is a complaint raised. There isn't any active monitoring, as I understand it, in the state regulations.
So that's where we are.
Just a comment. I don't know how it fits in, but last week, the Boys and Girls Club had a speaker in to discuss bullying and covered a lot of education and support service for children, families, et cetera. It was poorly attended.
You know, when we first had the method back in 2005, one of the reasons it was very effective is that we had the judge, the sheriff, and our treatment provider and the DA all would go out in tandem. And they went to St. Teresa's, they went to the high school. And they did three very large community forums, which were highly attended by hundreds of people. The second year, we went out and tried to do the same thing. Well, no, not the same. The second year, like two years passed, then we did it again. And it was Neil Rombardo, it was John Tetro, it was the sheriff, Rory Planeta, the Department of Alternative Sentencing, all very good speakers. And we went to every single school and promoted it through the school. Our highest attending school was Mark Twain Elementary. They had 75 parents there. And I would say all but three were Hispanic in the audience. We went to the high school and we had five people there. One father, and then one father, one mother, and their two sons. And it was broadcast through the phone system that they have, so everybody knew about it. So it's... We're seeing a real huge shift, and not just among adults. We're seeing a huge shift with kids attending things too. When Hannah was in eighth grade, she remembers the high school Stand Tall Don't Fall team, it's now called the Yield Team, put together what they call the Icebox Dances, where it's cool to be drug-free. That was the theme. And they did it for middle school students only. This is something the high schoolers did for middle schoolers. They sold 200 tickets as for here at the community center. Kids were crying because they didn't get one of the 200 tickets. And were so upset that they couldn't go to the dance. Now Hannah decided, "Hey, you know, I benefited from this, now I'm going to have my youth team do this." Same idea, same marketing, same getting the word out there. They had to cancel the event because as of the Friday before, only 25 kids bought tickets. We're seeing a shift in social media. You're able to communicate with your friends, you're able to communicate and get information sitting in the comfort of your own home. And this is beginning to impact town forums, community forums. So unless there's something that really hits them hard, and personally, you're probably not going to see them. And that's a real shame. He was a very good speaker. I'm going to bring Hannah up. She's going to do a 45-minute presentation in 10 minutes. And the reason we're showing you this... Everybody's about panicked. Yeah, I know. But anyway, what she does is on the youth trends. And what she does is she shows people, these are the most current youth trends. So rather than setting up the display in the PowerPoint, she brought you one bag of her goodies. She's going to show it to you. And in 10 minutes, you can cut her off. And I know Marina is really good at doing that kind of stuff, so we'll put her in charge. And I get the baby.
Good morning. How are you? So like Kathy said, I'm going to cut this really short. What was that? Oh, introduce myself. That's great. I'm Hannah McDonald. Can you hear me better now? Oh, it's not on? It's on? Yeah? Okay. I'm Hannah McDonald. I'm the youth program coordinator at Partnership Carson City. I'm also the mental health first aid trainer and the parent education person. If I had a business card, it would have a very long title on there. I'm just going to show you some of the drug information that I talk about in our youth trends presentation. The youth trends covers everything from the style of clothes that kids wear and how that promotes drug and alcohol and all sorts of different things to the hardcore synthetic drugs that people are using like bath salts. So I'll have Sandra pass them around so you can get your hands on them and see what they're like. And I'll just cover, starting with electronic cigarettes. Electronic cigarettes are something we see all the time. They are in people's hands constantly. But with youth, they're different. They have different modifications. So this is a standard Monster can, except it's also an electronic cigarette. It's open so you can see how it functions on the inside. And then there's all the other classic ones as well. We are seeing now, there are some statistics on how the fluid is dangerous. It can't touch your hands because you can get nicotine poisoning. The so-called vapor is not vapor. It's actually an aerosol. And it's wet when it comes out. And it sticks and it's heavy, just like marijuana smoke does. It also does cause second-hand contact, which is dangerous for children, pets, clothing, The other trending sensation that has been around for about 10 years and doesn't seem to be slowing down is spice. Some of these products, we purchased online to see how easy it was. Others were purchased in some of our local convenience stores, along with stores in Reno and in Dayton. There's more in here if you would grab those out for me. Spice is marketed as fake pot, a safe alternative to smoking weed or a legal alternative, except the side effects are so much greater. They come with different types of chemicals. No one brand is similar to the next. The side effects can be anything from permanent hallucinations to seizures, fainting, passing out, heavy addiction. And we see young people using these because they truly believe that it's a safer, healthier alternative. We also have bath salts. I don't have my example with me as Mr. Planeta has used them for some of his presentations. Bath salts is skyrocketing in our young generation. It used to be meth. That used to be what we were fighting. And now we're fighting bath salts. It's the same thing. It is just legal in a lot of places. The chemicals are changed on a regular basis. So as soon as we get some of those chemicals illegal, six months later, there's new ones out. They are sold online. Children can purchase them if they have a debit card or a credit card. They're sent to your house in discreet shipping. And they can be used within a couple of days of arrival. The next one we are always concerned about is energy drinks. We do presentations for young people with those. But the greatest concern is energy drinks with alcohol. They are cheaper, they're easy to get your hands on, and it gives kids the "I can party all night" feeling. That is something that I talk about with parents all the time. And I hear more than anything that it's adults who are mixing vodka with Red Bull. It's not really the teens. Teens are buying the ready-made Rockstar 21s and the Monster Juiced. What else is in there? The other one is kratom. I don't know if you've seen this on your convenience store shelves. It is a legal opioid. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to give this to the baby. Oh, yes. It's a legal opioid. It used to be used to help heroin addicts wean off. And it is now sold as a sexual supplement or a natural pain reliever. It's in capsules. It is a plant, so the belief is that it's safe. And it can... It's being sold on Chevron gas station shelves.
Excuse me. What is this?
That is spice as well.
So what does this do?
It is smoked or it can be brewed into a tea. And it is supposed to provide people with the same effects as marijuana. The high lasts anywhere from 20 minutes to three hours, depending on how strong the chemicals are on there. It causes hallucinations, vivid waking dreams.
Excuse me. And how does someone purchase this?
Oh, you can purchase that at any hemp shop. That one I purchased at the melting pot in Reno.
Really?
Mm-hmm. And that jar was about $20.
There's catnip in it.
Yeah. Uh-huh. And there's also the marshmallow plant. They sell it as a incense, except, you know, incense, obviously, we're not going to consume it. Incense doesn't come in loose-leaf form. And you can see some of those on there. They say Baby Jesus, or there's a naked woman on another one. They sell it for whatever type of person's going to purchase it. So it is smoked. It's supposed to be illegal, but they're continuously being made. And they're made underground. They're not made in a safe facility. They're made in people's houses, and then they just package them and sell them to the store. Is there any other questions about what's up there right now? You, oh, no, you're fine. That jar right there, you can open it and go ahead and smell it. If you were a parent, you would not be, no, it's a, it's not bad to smell it. We, we allow parents to smell it because they need to know what they're looking for. It doesn't have a smell like pot. It smells like incense. That one in the jar, it has a smell like chamomile tea. You would never know if this is on your kid. If you're a teacher, you wouldn't know if the student's carrying this in their pocket. Yeah, one smells like a regular. There's another one that smells like basil. And it might actually have basil in it, that's sprayed with a whole bunch of different types of chemicals. And so kratom is a, is a growing issue. And it is not illegal. The, the capsules are ingested through the stomach, and those can also be brewed into a tea. It is similar to heroin use. And according to the Sinclair gas station in Dayton, which is right next to my house, they can't keep it on the shelf. Every time I come in, I go, oh, you guys still have all of those? He goes, nope, I just filled that up this morning.
I'm sorry, but is there an age limit to? I mean, can a 12-year-old buy this?
There's supposed to be an age limit. However, when I went in, I wasn't IDed. I went in normal clothes, looked like, you know, any other person in there. I went into the back room, just where they have their glass pipes and stuff. And you're supposed to be IDed as soon as you go through that barrier. I was not IDed. I wasn't questioned or anything. And I did have a younger person with me. For the kratom, he told me at the gas station that they do not ID people because it does not say that there is, that it can't be sold to people under the age of 18. It's easy to get your hands on it. And if you know where to go in Carson, and I know that Mr. Furlong has worked very hard to get it off the shelves. He went in, I don't know, a couple of years ago, and asked people, please take this off your shelves. But there is always going to be that store where someone's selling it behind the counter. And if you are the right kind of kid, you know where to go, and you know how to get your hands on it. And if you can't, you can purchase it online. It's so easy. When we purchased it online, we purchased three packages, and they sent us an extra five for free. So it's not hard. It's really not that hard. We also are trying to combat different types of alcohol. This is vodka-infused whipped cream. It is just another way for young people to get drunk without us noticing. And afterwards, the Whippet, the, the can inside, kids suck the nitrous oxide out of. In recent-
Little tiny ones, you can pretty much-
Yes, yes. In recent months, I've had more questions for inhalants than I have for any other kind of drugs. I don't know if that's something that you're seeing, but I am getting questions on a regular basis about inhalants, about Whippets, about sniffing glue, about sniffing anything from bleach to markers. So that seems like it's back on the rise. I know that when I was in middle school, that was something kids just did in class. It seemed like it was normal to sniff a permanent marker. And then it died out, and now it seems to be coming back. So that is some, a presentation that will be offered shortly. We also offer presentations on underage drinking, and we give that presentation to youth, as well as adults. The youth trends is specifically for educators, law enforcement, parents. We do not present that to kids. It just gives them more ideas. And, yeah. And then the Mental Health First Aid is offered to anyone over the age of 18, unless they're 16 and seem that they are capable of handling that. Is there any questions? No? Well, at any time, if you would like to offer any of these trainings to your staff, you can call me. We offer anything from heroin to alcohol and youth trends and the Mental Health First Aid, which I hope all of you get trained soon. So feel free to call me and contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. She will now collect all her stuff.
Double check them.
Yeah. Thank you for a very comprehensive report. I think there's lots of good news. There's some sobering news, so to speak. But from the standpoint of the Board of Health, we, we do need to keep much of our attention focused on these issues because they do affect the health of our community in many ways. I will go on to have Dave Gibson and Mary Jane Ostrander. Mary Jane is our Division Manager for Human Services. They have conducted a quality improvement program within the Human Services Division that they're going to give us a report about. Or perhaps just Dave.
Good morning, my name is Dave Gibson. I'm a case manager with Carson City Health and Human Services. Thank you, Dr. Pentar. What Carson City Human Services has available are two programs that our community citizens are taking advantage of and utilizing. One is our Housing Assistance Program, and the other one that we have is our Workforce Program. We were taking a look at how those two programs can interact and develop a quality improvement plan to help people be more successful in utilizing those two programs. Our Housing Assistance Program, the, this is housing assistance that's given to them utilizing both federal, state, and a city grant, if it's available. And our Workforce Program is available to citizens to help them find sustainable income. And we also, in the same program, talk about avoiding garnishes and understanding their paychecks. So when we started looking at a commonality among the two programs, we realized that it was identified that the missing link to these programs was achieving financial literacy. And a definition briefly of financial literacy is understanding how your money comes in and how you spend your money. So with that problem statement, we then developed our Financial Literacy Project Development Plan. Again, this is a QI, or Quality Improvement Program, that we presented to the city, our department, with Carson City Health and Human Services. And first, we identified our barriers that we're working with. Loss of transportation, ironically, and unfortunately, this is becoming more and more prevalent where individuals are taking their vehicle. They're going out and getting a title loan off of that. They're not paying that loan back. They're losing their vehicle. The impact of that, then, is that it may, that it impact their employment, not being able to come and go. Their majority of their, their actual income is going towards payment of rent, utilities, and their basic needs. And no savings programs are in place. And they're literally living paycheck to paycheck. This is when we'll start to see them coming in because they've lost their employment, or they've, they're in the process of losing their residency. So our obstacles that we identified is language. And by language, we mean the understanding of the financial banking language. So we've, we work with that as a, as a part of our training program. Cultural experience, again, financial literacy is not taught in schools today. And unfortunately, parents don't have a clear understanding of how their finances work. And unfortunately, they're not passing on strong financial skills to their children. So we're seeing it from the cultural experience. Location and hours. We're seeing employees coming in who are working odd hours, unable to get to a bank if they're using that, or having their check in hand and looking for a way of getting the cash out of that. Banks require ID, and some don't have actual ID. The other one is a variable cash flow or penalty fees. And what we're talking there is not knowing how to handle their banking account and their finances. They're facing overdraft fees. They're facing title loans or signature loans. And then last is the product complexity. Banks do a wonderful job at managing finance. What we're finding out and talking with our clients is that they will walk into a bank, and they may end up signing up for a program they really don't need with the bank. That may cause them to overdraft protection, as an example, not realizing that overdraft protection is going to cost them money because they, that's not a freebie. That's a product that's being provided by the banking systems. So we took a look at our, our profile within Nevada and compared it to the rest of the state, or rest of the nation. You'll notice that we're pretty much straight across the board with, with everyone, the exception of the asset poverty rate. What an asset poverty rate, or asset poverty is, what do you have in the way of assets, car, vehicle, home, property with, with value? Unfortunately, in Nevada, we are seeing more and more individuals without actual asset property. Why is that? They've not been able to obtain and maintain vehicles and other properties. Everyone else matches pretty much what the, what the nation does, with the exception, again, of the average credit card debt. And this is an average snapshot credit card debt of $9,000 that we're seeing people having. And it's not just credit card, but it's title loans, it's personal loans and such. So to implement our QA program, we wanted to partner with someone who could help us best educate and work with our citizens of Carson City, both with our housing programs and with our workforce programs. We were able to partner with Community Resources, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And we mandated attendance. Now, when we get grants that are, that we applied for, with both state and federal grants, they have some expectations of those grants, that the person coming off of it, when we have worked with them in getting their, their rent settled, they need to be sustained in the community. And if they don't understand how, what got them where they are to come in and ask, they're not going to be successful coming off. So we've actually mandated that our clients attend our Financial Literacy workshops. Initially, when we put the QA program together, we had broken it down into eight modules. Each module's an hour approximately. And each module focuses on a different topic. Our intent when we put the QA project together was to measure their financial literacy prior to and at the completion of those eight modules. The unfortunate piece is we weren't seeing consistency in the attendance on those programs. Short-term assistance, they weren't attending it. So we did have to revisit that for the QI outcome. But I wanted to kind of show you next that our initial literary, financial literacy survey is that over 50% of our clients did not have a bank account. Of that, 43 never looked at a credit report. And 43 or 44% have taken out a payday loan in need of monies. So again, you can see where not having the money, needing the money has caused, it costs them more money. And we're trying to get them stable. Well, then we take a look at their checking account or their banking. And so we look at how we're, how check, paychecks were cashed. And almost 18% go to the casino. Although they'll all tell me, oh, I just cashed my checks, spin the wheel, and walk right out. I'm not sure that they didn't leave a dollar or two to help support our industry. About 9% go to a check cashing store. Some of these will charge a fee for that. We see about 35% who do have their own checking account, and that is successful. And then the other, almost 40%, is stores, direct deposit cards and whatnot. What we're seeing is employers now saying, we're not going to give you a paycheck. We want a either direct deposit. Oh, you don't have a bank account? Well, you can use our debit card that we're going to give you and put your check on that. Two things happen then. One, anytime they use it, they're going to get charged. And two, they don't keep their bank receipts. They don't usually get it, don't ask for it, didn't know they're supposed to. So when they do have a check stub, we found out that 63% approximately claim they have some filing system. Got to share a story with you. I've asked them to bring that in, and it's still in a sealed envelope. They've never looked at it, but it's filed. About 14% actually throw it away. They don't see any value of it. I've had somebody go through the center console of the car, was quite surprised they had a few in there. 9% don't really don't know what happened to it. They just snapped it off and cashed the check. And then the other 13-plus percent is the other. And these are the ones that actually don't get one. They haven't asked for it, the employer didn't give it to them. They're simply told, your paycheck is on this credit card. I've actually got one employee, or one client currently searching with his employer to get a statement. And even then, the employer says, well, I really don't know how that comes about. I'll have to find out for you. So it's just a matter of convenience, and it's kind of frightening. We were real fortunate when we put our QA plan together to reach out, Mary Jane Ostrander was responsible for this, reaching out and finding a partner that we could partner with that would be able to talk in technical terms to levels of people that may not understand those terms. And we were real fortunate to work with Nevada State Bank and the Financial Guidance Center. A little more about Nevada State Bank in a moment. The Financial Guidance Center is also a nonprofit service that's available through Reno and an office in Las Vegas. They offer various types of programs, and educational programs, including, and I love this one, in order to get a loan for your, in order to buy a house, you need a down payment. The Financial Guidance Center has a program that'll match three to one on your savings account, up to two years for your deposit. Amazing. That's out there. There are also savings programs for children that are matched two to one or three to one towards their education. So we're trying to teach, again, financial literacy is part of our goal of our QA program, QI program, to teach financial literacy to those individuals so that we can break that tide of the parents understanding financial literacy and their children having a better understanding as well. When we do our seminars, we've had 27 workshops. We're using three workshops a day, uh, three workshops a month. Two are offered in the evening, one in the day, so we can catch that, that group of, of our clients. And with Nevada State Bank, and we were the first ones, again, in northern Nevada to put this program together. Nevada State Bank had and has this program functioning down in Las Vegas. And it was just serendipitous that Mary Jane was able to contact them, and they were looking for someone to partnership. We were the ones. So we're real fortunate with that. Since that time, the bank has provided over 40 volunteer hours of their banking staff to come in and teach, train, and answer questions to our, to our Financial Literacy Program. And because of our initiation with Nevada State Bank in the north, they are now working with Douglas County on a very similar program. They are linked now with Washoe County Charter School, Court Systems, and the Charter Schools, and University of Nevada Women's Basketball Team. Freshmen come on on a scholarship. They are housed in dorms when they become sophomores. Has nothing to do with our program, I just think it's cool. When they become a sophomore, they're given a stipend, and they don't know how to manage their money. So UNR is now presenting this Financial Literacy Program through Nevada State Bank to those students so they can learn how to manage their money as well. So our workshops include... I don't know, hold on. I got carried away. The Financial Guidance Center, I'll just kind of touch the base with that. As I mentioned, has financial guidance counseling. This is a great way, if someone is claiming I'm going to file for bankruptcy. The Financial Guidance Center will actually take that person in, explain the pros and cons, explain to them what bankruptcy in fact does. They'll help them with debt management. And rather, you've, you've seen these or heard them on television or radio. Gee, come on in, we'll help you manage your debt. There's a fee to that. Financial Guidance Center's working with a, with granting. They also assist with those housing programs that we talked about. Assist with developing programs. And they are now taking advantage of lending circles. A little bit about lending circles. We were the first ones to present a lending circle seminar this week in northern Nevada. A lending circle is a unique opportunity for the individuals to help build up their credit score. And in a nutshell, you'll get six people, let's say they're all going to put in $50. The money's secured into a bank. Some point in time over the next six months, everyone puts in $50. Someone in that group, each month, is entitled to pull the, this $300 out of whatever the total amount is. They can use that to pay off a bill, buy new tires, help manage your debt. And that action with the bank accounts for them being able to say, I've taken a loan out and I've paid it back 100%. And it can bump their credit score from five to 40 points, depending upon the amount and how often they do that. So again, the lending circles is something that we're going to be expanding to. It's also included in our Financial Literacy Quality Improvement Program. The workshops that are currently being provided through Nevada State Bank, each module is independent of the other. Each talks about a separate topic or subject. And it is very informal, so that questions can be asked specifically to that individual person. It's, the programs that we're currently offering are things just don't happen. In other words, gee, I don't know how I ended up being in debt. Taking control of your credit, how to do budgeting of your household, know your credit score, what's credit versus debit, opening up an account, protecting your financial identity, and then how to rent an apartment. What we've learned from these workshops is that many of our clients and the people that have attended our- that have attended our seminars owe a debt to the bank. Meaning, they've overdrawn. They owe that money back to the bank. They've not gone back and resolved that problem, and therefore, they cannot open another bank account. Another that we've identified in the same QA program is fear of having my financial banking amount frozen because I owed child support. Another one that we've identified is direct deposit advances or overdraft protection. And it is, they don't understand that that's viewed just as you would a payday loan. The money isn't free. It's your money, and you're going to get charged for it when the bank moves it from their holdings into your account. Our results on our QA to date, we've had 23 individuals who have participated in more than one workshop. And that's a little bit misleading. That's 23 possible families as well. We count our clients as a family or an individual family. Of that, we've had five of our clients or families have now opened a bank account. And 12, we're constantly discussing the opportunity and removing barriers so they can address their debt need and open up that account. Again, part of our QA program, when I initially talked about that, we were looking at being able to measure their success in an eight-module program. And that really didn't prove to be viable to us. So we had to adopt our, or adapt, our QA program to do a pre- and post-test before and after each module. And this allowed us then to identify each module its success rate. And upon identification, we had found that our results... Next slide. She's already heard it, Sujan. Our results, when we've, on the first one that we did with just measuring the before and after, which was opening a bank account, we gave them a test that's going to be based upon the knowledge that they're going to learn. And after that program, those clients that weren't attending had an average of a 40% increase in understanding the requirements and regulations in banking. So we've already seen an improvement there. The next workshop that we held, and again, did the pre- and post, where things just don't happen, a great little module on how you got where you are and what you need to get away from that. And again, we saw a 40% increase in understanding and goal setting. At this time, I'd like to thank Nevada State Bank and their volunteers who've put in over 40-hour volunteer hours in helping us get this program together. That's Dan Dykes, Sanja Fuentes, Lily Chavez, Rusty Duncan, Danielle Longheed, Audrey Wilson, Jeremiah Jones, Anna Gutzman, Danielle Osterwild, Justin Murray. And one of our key motivators and a great person to work with is Jennifer Fonda, who happens to be here. I'd like to ask if Jennifer would step up, please.
Mary Jane Ostrander, Manager of Human Services Division. And thank you, Dave, for pronouncing all those names. Now I don't have to. But I wanted to extend my thanks to Nevada State Bank. It has been just tremendous. I have to say, you know, I sat in on the first three workshops, and it probably wasn't till the third one or so that you can even identify what bank they were from, which was exactly what we were looking for. We weren't looking for a bank to come in and sell their bank or anything. We were looking for a bank that was interested in what we needed. And they have just been phenomenal. They come in, they just cater to who's there. They may have a curriculum, but that curriculum can just go south really fast, depending on questions and stuff. And they've adjusted wonderfully. So I just want to extend my thanks to Jennifer and all the volunteers. We have volunteers that are coming from Reno to do the class, from Douglas County to do the class. And it's just wonderful. And, you know, even if we only have two or three people there, they're like, okay, no problem. We're doing it. So I do have a certificate of appreciation for Nevada State Bank, as well as each of the individuals that have participated in our workshops. So I will extend these to you. And if you have anything to say?
Sure. Just, you know, I want to thank Carson City Health and Human Services for the partnership that we have created because it really was our guinea pig when we brought this program to the north. And we've had such great success. And ultimately, in that perfect world, we would love to get in front of our youth and try to instill banking and just some of the terms and what it's like to have a checking account and the things that can happen if you're not fiscally responsible. But unfortunately, that doesn't happen. So we're really in a reactive role with a lot of our residents, both here and in Washoe County, especially when we deal with the specialty courts up in Washoe County. But it's great to get in there and talk to them about things that are never going to fall off their credit report and why we need to start addressing those and how they can get back on their feet. And, you know, worst case, if they've had to file bankruptcy, letting them know that some fairy's not all of a sudden going to make their credit an 800, that they need to take steps to get back on the road and how to even get an account open. We even bring in information with other great local financial institutions on how maybe they can bank with them if Nevada State Bank isn't the right method. But the big thing is just getting out there and educating our residents, especially when you see that Nevada's up at the top when it comes to payday lending, to gambling issues. I mean, it really falls on the financial institutions to educate our clients and our customers on what it's like to be fiscally responsible. So thank you for just letting us be part of Carson City Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Jennifer. On behalf of the board, I have heard about the program with glowing reports from our staff. And I'm hoping that we can expand it quite radically in the, in the community because I agree with you totally. And it's been, it's been a wonderful program. So I do thank you. And please convey our thanks to your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Are there questions or comments from the board regarding this program?
I'm just thrilled that it's in place. How do you interface with, or do you interface with Circles Initiative in terms of educating their clients?
We open up our workshops to anybody. We are constantly dropping off flyers to other agencies and things like that. Up until now, we haven't had too much of a response from our outside agencies. But it is open to anybody. Some people bring their kids. They're welcome. I brought mine, you know? Because we all need it, you know? And also, one of the things that we saw is the technology. You know, people aren't sitting down with their paper bank statement anymore and, you know, doing the little check marks and everything. They're, you know, whipping out their phone. Ah, yeah, I got money. You know, and that's scary. That's scary to me. But, um, so it is, I'm sorry. Back to you. It is open to anybody. I wanted to make one correction, although Davey, you're great. The lending circles has been done in Washoe County. So the presentation was the first one here in Carson City.
So referrals are open, is what you're saying?
Referrals are open. Everybody's welcome.
You can call Dave, or you can call Mary Jane. And if there's an interested person that you're interested, that's who they should contact.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I'd like to make just a comment here. These are, we try and bring our quality improvement projects so you can see what we're doing. But this is how the, these projects are what ties into our performance management system that I talked about earlier. So this is how it all fits in together.
Thank you. I'll now entertain any public comment. Seeing none? A motion for adjournment, correct?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All opposed. That's what I thought.
We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. We're going to reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and move on to item number 18. Nick, are you going to take us through this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. For the record, Nick, Providenti Finance Director. This is the, you know, the typical action to accept the report on the condition of the Treasury and the statement of receipts and expenditures through October 7, 2014. I just wanted to thank Janet Bussie of the City Manager's Office. She's spruced up our website a little bit, making things a lot more user-friendly. And I think it'll make, you know, the financial information a little bit easier to read if folks actually look at the website to find that information. So I just wanted to thank her for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Nick. Any board discussion on this issue? Public comment? I'll bring it back to the board.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through October 7, 2014 per NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Onto item number 18. Bee?
This action is to confirm the engagement of Sherman and Howard as bond counsel for Carson City, Nevada in connection with the $13.6 million Carson City, Nevada general obligation infrastructure sales tax bonds, Series 2014. I know Supervisor Shirk had had some questions regarding this item. Basically, the bonding is the first in a series that we are proposing. We are suspecting to bond a total of about 17, just under $17.4 million total for the project. And this is the first of the series, the $13.6 million. And this will probably cover the MAC, the animal services, and then the downtown projects to start with. And then the funding source, we note that it's the infrastructure fund, which is essentially the 1A cent sales tax. So if there's any other questions?
Board discussion? Seeing none? Public comment? And then I'll bring it back to the board. John?
I move to confirm the engagement of Sherman and Howard as bond counsel to Carson City, Nevada in connection with the $13.6 million Carson City, Nevada general obligation limited tax infrastructure sales tax bonds, additionally secured by pledge revenues, Series 2014-C.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. Although I do understand the framework of why this is coming to the board, and I will vote in favor of it because it's a policy to enact this, although I voted against the one in sales tax, I will still vote in favor of this because it is a policy that we must do to obtain the bonding, even though I voted against the bonding.
Right. Just one thing for the record. Can we remove the 2014-C? Because I'm not exactly sure there are going to be 2014-C bonds. I think that was just a typographical error. If we can just leave it as Series 2014, that would be fine.
John, comment?
Fine with me.
Okay.
Fine with me.
All right.
Nick, before you. Did we see this before?
We have not on these, on these bonds, on the bond counsel. We saw them on the refunding bonds, probably about a month ago. So every time there's new bonds, we have to do these.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 19A under purchasing and contracts. Kim?
Morning. Kim Belt, purchasing contracts. This is a contract where staff is asking approval for Contract 1415083 to Loomis and Associates. This is a contract to provide professional services, design services for drainage and roadway improvements to the facilities on the east and west sides of the wastewater reclamation plant and general site landscaping with an emphasis on the north fifth street frontage of the facility. Loomis was selected through a request for proposal process, RFP 1314129, which was a SOQ for public work services, a variety of, like, geotag material testing. And Loomis was selected for wastewater treatment plant design services in January of this year. And if there are specific questions on the project itself, David Bruck... And if there are specific questions on the project itself, David Brukhead is here.
I'll open this up for a board discussion. Questions?
David, good morning. On page two of five of Exhibit A, under Task Three, bottom of the page, it states, "No FEMA coordination, submittals, or modeling are included in this task." Can you clarify for us if that work has already been done, or if it will be done by somebody else, or if it will be done in-house?
Yes, good morning. David Brukhead of Public Works. This is going to be an ongoing process. It's related to the flood project, and this is just one of the components. So it will be done in future work. Eventually, there'll be, it's called a LOMAR process. It's part of the flood work to get the wastewater treatment plant out of the flood plain. So this is only one component of it, so that'll be done in the future event.
Thank you. And then on Task Four, on page three of five, levy characteristics. Can you just, can you give us a brief explanation of any changes that are going to be happening with the levy system over there and the retention ponds? Are we going to continue to need them after this work is done, or will they be going away? Or?
No, they will still stay there. This, again, is just part of the future testing that we're going to need for that process. When we're building the plant right now, it's going to be built to the existing flood base elevation, and eventually it'll be taken out. But this is just one of the components of that. So the levy will still remain, yes.
And what is the reason that it needs to remain?
Because we're building to, currently, we're building to the existing flood base elevation. The process that we'll need to go through, that LOMAR process, will take time and money, and that'll be done in a future event. But we have to build to today's current levels.
And then my final question is, there's quite a bit of information in here about a landscaping plan, but there are no drawings here. I'm just wondering how much the landscaping is going to be enhanced at the plant. Currently, there's just a few trees. Is it going to be an attractive landscape belt, or is it going to be similar to what is there now, which is just a few trees?
Well, and this is what this is going to give us. It's going to give us some perspective from looking at it from the Fifth Street. So, you know, we're doing a major $33 million renovation of portions of that treatment plant. So we want to leave it in better condition than what we have now. So an element to this will be the landscaping. So this is the, this component is the design to look at landscaping, especially from the Fifth Street. And, you know, we'll tie in what we have for budget money set aside for landscaping compared to, you know, what we can do in the entire project. So I don't have an absolute answer for you because I haven't seen the plan yet.
Has this been through the Citizens Committee?
I'm sorry, the Citizens Committee.
The Utility Oversight Committee?
The Utility Financial Oversight. It has not been. We'll bring, you know, probably in the spring, we'll bring back the budget information to the Financial Oversight Committee. This will be a small element of it because it does involve the expenditure dollars.
Okay, so that committee is going to be after the fact or before the fact on looking at things?
Well, what they'll be looking at is making sure that we meet our financial objectives, and that's really what the purpose of that committee was set up for. So this is, these are, you know, specific details. What we'll bring back to that committee is a plan, looking at our financial objectives to make sure that we currently meet them.
Okay, so we set financial objectives for this. You design the plant, et cetera, and incur the expenditures, and then they report back to the citizens that you did it right, or they didn't like what you did?
Yes, I mean, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody understands how it works, so.
Any further board discussion? Public comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring this back to the board.
I move to approve Contract Number 1415-083 pursuant to NRS 332.115 Subsection 1, Subsection B, and NRS 625.530 with Loomis and Associates to provide professional services for the wastewater reclamation facility in an amount not to exceed $158,000 to be funded from the wastewater reclamation facility Phase One Improvement Project Number 051301 as provided for in fiscal year 2014-2015.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number 19B under purchasing and contracts.
Right. Carson City staff is asking to accept the work as completed, to accept the contract summary as presented, and to approve the release of final payment to Briggs Electric, Incorporated, for the Fuji Park Electrical Infrastructure Project. That's Contract 1314-185. There were no change orders for this project. Bid award was $112,000, $175, and no sense. And the engineer's estimate was $115,000. There were no change orders, so the total project cost is estimated $112,000, $175. Are there any questions?
Board? Any questions from the board? Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring this back to the board.
I move to accept the work as completed, to accept the contract summary as presented, and to approve the release of final payment in the amount of $887.50 for Contract Number 1314-185 titled Fuji Park Electrical Infrastructure Project of Briggs Electric Company, Incorporated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kim. Moving on to item number 20, Public Works. Hi, Tom.
Hi, Tom Grundy with Carson City Public Works. This item is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a waterline participation agreement between Stephen and Don Hudson and the city of Carson City. The Hudson's are developing the last lot on East Overland Drive between Ponderosa and Bigelow, and the CCMC Title 12 requires them to extend the water main across their property frontage. And then there was about another 170 feet that would never, that would just not be constructed. And so we decided that it was a good idea to participate with them and take that waterline all the way to Bigelow. That way, we get better fire flows in the area, better redundancy in the system, and that's what this item is for.
All right, I will open this for a board discussion.
Good morning, Tom. And the only question they have is that there's a not-to-exceed amount of $30,000 on this. Is that amount based on bid estimates for the work? In other words, my real question is, if the city portion of the work to go to Bigelow exceeds $30,000, is that then going to become the responsibility of the Hudson's?
If the city portion of the work exceeded $30,000, I'd have to come back to you. The cost estimate was based on a preliminary quote from one of the contractors, and after we wrote, after I wrote this board action item, we got the final quotes from the contractors. And so the city portion is less than $30,000.
Okay, great, thank you.
Including a 10% contingency.
Any other board discussion on this? Jim?
First off, Tom, I'd like to thank you for incorporating the overview of where this project is going on. It's very helpful, so thank you for that, and I really appreciate it. My questions, you've already answered in my private, previous email, and I appreciate that as well, so thank you.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring this.
Tom, I've got a question. Has Carson City ever done this before with anyone else?
Yes, we have. We haven't done any recently. The most recent two I could find, we did one over on Markway, and we also did one with Carson Gaming on Curry Street.
Further comment on this issue? I'll bring it to the board for a motion.
I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a waterline participation agreement by and between Stephen and Don Hudson and the city of Carson City, a political subdivision of the state of Nevada, for work including but not limited to the construction of a waterline in accordance with approved plans and specifications for 1040 East Overland Street Water Main Extension. The total city commitment to this project, as specified in the agreement, shall not exceed a total of $30,000 from the water funds.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number 21, under Community Development. And Susan, are you going to take us through this?
I am, thank you. Good morning.
Before we start, I need to disclose.
Brad has a disclosure.
I need to disclose that agents in my real estate office represent medical marijuana establishment clients, and because this item is of a general nature and not for specific applicants, then I will participate and vote in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Okay, thanks for the record, Susan Dorpansky, Planning Manager. This is the second reading of the Medical Marijuana Business License Ordinance. It is essentially unchanged from the original that was heard at the last board meeting, with one exception. With the direction from the board that we received at the last meeting, we added an item 4F that states the names of all owners with at least a 5% interest in the business with the percentage of each person's ownership listed, and that's a requirement for the business license application. This list will be a part of the standard business license application and will be subject to public record review. We have received no additional comments on this from the public, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Board, is there any, are there any questions? John?
Question for Randy. Is that going to cause us to go back and have a second first reading?
No, if it was, it didn't materially change.
Jim? Did you have a question? No. Public comment?
Resolution number is 2014-14.
I move to adopt on second reading Bill Number 115, Ordinance Number 2014-14, an ordinance amending the Carson City Municipal Code Title IV, Licenses and Business Regulations, Chapter 4.04 Business License, Section 4.04.005 Definitions by adding definitions for medical marijuana establishments, Section 4.04.020, 4.04.031, and 4.04.040 by adding fees for medical marijuana establishments and exempting medical marijuana establishments from certain fees, and adding a new section, 4.04.120, entitled Medical Marijuana Establishments: Application for License and Additional Regulations to Provide Additional Requirements for Medical Marijuana Establishment Business Licenses and Other Matters Properly Related There To.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I know there's a second reading, and the first reading I voted against this, and the reason I did vote against it, I don't think the fees that are incorporated now are adequate. I think what staff first brought to us, the fees amount, we should have incorporated to this. We reduce from where staff recommended we charge to a lower, I think, extremely low, in my opinion, for what's going to be generated from these facilities, and other communities have opted out. We're going to be the one community that will be thriving in this business, and we're not charging adequate fees for this. And other communities are also charging a 2% revenue fee, which I recommended to this board, and they did not go with this as well. I believe these fees should be increased, and for that reason, I'm not voting in favor of this.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 21B. Lee, are you going to take us through this one?
Good morning. For the record, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. We're moving fast. I'll try to slow down a little bit talking here. This is action to authorize the mayor to sign a letter on behalf of the Board of Supervisors recommending the reappointment of me to the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council for a three-year term from January 2015 through 2017. It was about a year ago that you appointed me. I think John was the previous appointee to this. You appointed me to fill this position. It was for a partial term. They're staggering the terms now, so this would be my, if you move forward with this appointment, it would be my first full term on this loop hack.
Thank you, Lee. I'll give this to the board for questions.
Lee, do you like doing it? You want to keep doing it, or you want to stick Susan with it?
No, and I do, I accept the appointment and would like to do it.
Good enough for me.
Any further board discussion? Public comment? Back to the board.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a letter on behalf of the Board of Supervisors recommending the reappointment of Community Development Director Lee Plummel to the State Land Use Planning Advisory Committee for a three-year term from January 2015 through December 2017.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, item number 22, and City Manager. Nick?
Madam Mayor, paying the monthly bills.
Board discussion on this issue? Seeing none. Public comment? Seeing none.
I move to ratify the approval of bills and other requests for payment by the City Manager for the period September 9, 2014, through October 6, 2014.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Now we move on to item number 23, non-action items. And Nick, did you want to discuss any future agenda items that you wanted to bring forward?
Well, we have a couple coming up. Based on discussion from the last meeting, I've gone over, met with the leadership over the golf course. We should bring forward in January, we'll do an annual briefing, and I'll keep that on track. I have a lot of the documents already, so we'll look to do that briefing in January. Just a reminder, November 6, for that meeting, we'll be bringing forth the conceptual plan for the Downtown Carter redevelopment. And other than that, Madam Mayor, that's it.
Thank you, Nick. Any status review of projects? Seeing none? Any internal communications or administrative matters?
No.
All right. Correspondence to the Board of Supervisors and/or status reports by any members of the board?
I would like to bring up, there will be something going on for honoring Mayor Marv, and that would be held on, I'm sorry, I don't have the date in front of me, but I'm reading the article. It was just, the Nevada Appeal. It's at 4:30 on Tuesday, the monument near the pavilion, that would be, so it's just coming Tuesday at 4:30 honoring Marv. Also do want to mention another article that was in the Nevada Appeal about Carson City Lodging is up 4.5% in August. I think that's great for us, and for the city, and for sales tax revenue. So I just wanted to point those out. Thank you. Sorry.
And I just wanted to comment, I sit on the Visitors Bureau, and for the second month in a row, we've topped 1.8 million in room tax revenue, which is the first time ever that that has occurred, so that's pretty exciting. I also attended Nevada Works, and high on the discussion was Tesla, and from all northern Nevada counties represented. And pertinent to that discussion was the fact that, especially in Lying County, they don't just want to be a community of rooftops, and so we'll be actively looking to engage other business and industry in that area. So just to be noted, and Mike Salaga attended that with me, that in our going forward with NNTA, we probably need to be very active in soliciting business and industry in our area as well. It's going to be a hot commodity.
And finally, I have, as late material, we received a report from Shelley Aldean on the TRPA Governing Board, and I just wanted to acknowledge Shelley, her reports are excellent, very informative, and very, very, very comprehensive. So thank you, Shelley.
John?
Can I ask Mr. Glover what's going on in Carson City over the next few weeks?
Thank you, Supervisor McKenna. I was just going to do that in a public comment. We start early voting on Saturday. On the two Saturdays that we're open, we're open from 10 until 2. During the week, we are open from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night. A good time to come is in the middle of the week. A good time to come is in the middle of the week, in the middle of the afternoon is the best time. Low turnout in those hours. We're very heavy in the mornings and weekends in there. So we look forward to having everybody come and vote in this upcoming general election. Absentee ballots, excuse me, absentee ballots for local people were sent out. They should have received them. The sample ballots, we got ours at our house yesterday because they were mailed. We lost the holiday in there because of federal holidays. So if people have not received, excuse me, their sample ballot, they should call our office and see if we can figure out why they didn't get one.
Alan, could you also go into the ID requirements that you've imposed this year?
Well, ID...
The letter in the front of the sample ballot.
Yes, that has been our standard language. If people registered through a voter registration outfit or mailed in their voter registration application, and it did not clear with the Department of Motor Vehicles, we send those up every night, and they check those against Social Security and the Nevada Driver's License. If that did not clear for some reason, ID will be required, and that's marked in the new electronic poll books, and we will ask you for ID. Most common is, and I will use the future clerk, is, her name is Susan Meriwether, and if she registered to vote as Sue Meriwether, she probably would not have cleared, and therefore will be required to show that. Address is the other one. We mail something to somebody, and it comes back undeliverable. We need to know where they live, so they need to bring proof of that. Either if it's not on their driver's license, then rent receipt, or something that shows that they live at that address.
And this is your last election, and it's going to be your most successful?
Absolutely. The last hurrah.
Thank you, Alan. Any other board comments? One more public comment? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Do I?
Oh, yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay. We are adjourned.